Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council regular meeting for June the 11th, 2019, 7:00. Call this meeting to order. May I please have roll call?
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor O’Connell?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Davis is excused with notice.
Ellie from the County of San Mateo, may I ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance for this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment on items that are not on the agenda.
Robert Rieckel.
Good evening, Council and viewing audience. As your trustee to the mosquito district, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things quickly. I wanted to thank the city for continuing to support the district by reminding the citizens to dump all standing water and report dead birds, State 77 WNV Bird. And if you have questions, the district phone number is 344-8592. It’s that time of the year again when the district will start, excuse me, be dropping pellets on the Millsfield, the Tulley areas to eradicate breeding mosquitoes. The first treatment will be on Tuesday, July 2nd. Third is on August 6th. Second is on August 6th, followed by August 27th, and then October 1st. I have a flyer that I’m going to give the city clerk, and maybe you can put it in the city hall somewhere. And we really greatly appreciate the citizens when they call in the dead birds. So, thank you again.
Thanks, Robert. Appreciate your effort in representing San Bruno. Any other speaker cards?
No.
Anybody in the audience that wanted to speak an item that is not on the agenda? If not, we will be moving on to announcements. We have a few things. First, I’m sorry. I’m sorry. This is public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Did you wish to speak on one of them? No? Okay. All right. Let’s go back to announcements and presentations. First, we want to thank the San Bruno community for a few things that they’ve been participating in. Operation Clean Sleep, which Vice Mayor O’Connell had mentioned. There was also a coffee and conversation with Supervisor Pine of the 1st District from San Mateo County, and myself, which we held at Grand Leader Market. And residents came in and expressed some of the questions, concerns, and other things that they had. It was enjoyable. We also, of course, have had the budget study session. We had Community Day. And you can learn about the city’s, through the city’s website, learn more about the upcoming meetings and events at www.sanbruno.ca.gov/calendar. Item B, the San Bruno Flea Market will be held in San Bruno City Park on July 21st from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. C, for future planning, the city has embarked on physical sustainability effort to ensure we are continuing to address the community’s priorities and the residents’ needs. To be a part of the process, you can tell us what you think. A survey is available on the city website at www.sanbruno.ca.gov/enhancingyorsanbruno. Next item, the San Bruno City Manager’s proposed budget, which we have been going over. We’d had two sessions. One was held at the Recreation Center in the Meeting Room on May 29th, and that was from 10:00 a.m. to 5:20 p.m., where the city council and city staff reviewed the budget and the operations. And also, we just concluded at 5:00, we had a second study session that was held here. These are available. The budget is available online. These were recorded. It is available online, so you can see those. And the council will be finally reviewing and/or adopting the budget on June 25th here at the Senior Center. And then, another announcement is that the annual business license renewal process has begun, so let’s just let the community know that as well. And just so you didn’t have to hear from me through all the announcements, I am very gracious that Ellie from the San Mateo County Parks Department was kind enough to come down, and I appreciate that very much, to let us know. We wanted the community to know, as we embarked upon the dogs on a leash through our parks, the county is now doing something with Huniparo Sarah right out here. We thought it would be great to get an update for our community.
Great. Thank you so much, Mayor. So, good evening, council members, city staff, and San Bruno residents. My name is Ellie Dahlman, and I’m here on behalf of San Mateo County Parks Department. Some of you may have heard the San Mateo County Parks is expanding on-leash dog access in our county parks by initiating a six-month on-leash pilot program at Huniparo Sarah Park, which is right here, as well as Coyote Point Recreation Area. And I’m here today to invite you all to a meet and greet event at Huniparo Sarah Park this weekend on Friday evening, starting from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., where we invite you and your dogs to come and meet with the rangers and talk about some of the other plans that we have for piloting off-leash dog access as well. And so, each of you, if you haven’t gotten a little postcard already, I also left some here with staff, if any residents are interested, but these, be the leader of the pack. Postcards also include additional information about other county parks, where we invite you to visit with your dogs on leash, as well as some guidelines and things to remember when you visit parks with your dogs. So with that, we hope to see you all Friday evening. We’d love to see council members, staff, and any of the residents that are here. Please share the information with your friends as well. I’d be happy to take any questions or provide additional background.
Any questions from council?
What time does it start?
It starts at 5:30 p.m. And the event will happen at Willow Shelter. And so if you come in by the kiosk at the front, they’ll be able to direct you exactly where that is.
Great. Thank you.
Ellie, I do want to thank you very much for taking your time to come down. And you could have just sent this to us, but when you were called, you said, “I’ll be there.” So I want to thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
You’re very welcome. Thank you. Now we’ll move on to consent calendar.
All items on the consent calendar are considered routine or implement an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Are there any items the council wishes to pull? Item D has been requested. Any other items? If not, I’m going to ask that we can first take A, B, and C, if we can have a motion to approve A, B, and C.
To the chair, I move we approve the remainder.
No. A, B, and C.
We approve A, B, and C.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have 4-0. E, the reason I wanted to bring this up separate is because of the vice mayor, and so I wanted this action done separately because of the recuse. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve item E?
So moved.
Second?
Motion made in second to approve item E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a 3-0 with one recused. Now we’ll go back to item D. Adopt resolution accepting the streetlight pole replacement project as complete, authorizing the filing of notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder’s Office, and authorizing release of the construction contract retention in the amount of $9,205. Marty?
Yes. So the purpose of pulling this item is, I’ve done these quite a bit, is to help our residents understand the cost that it takes to maintain our city. This project has identified, of the 2,100 streetlights, there are 680 of them that need replacement. This project replaced 36 streetlights at the average cost of $5,331, yet there are 644 more lights that need to get replaced at some point, which is another $3.4 million. So I’ve had people ask me, “Well, man, why is the city always getting more money? You know, isn’t it enough? Isn’t it enough?” Well, when you have a city with the age of ours, it’s time to replace things. And I’m pulling this to just bring that to everybody’s attention. These streetlights, as it says in the report, have an average lifespan of 50 years. And then there’s some poles that are 80 to 100 years already standing, so they have a lifespan like everybody else, right? So in our budget, we have $400,000 in the next two budget years to repair. But that’s $800,000, but we still need another $2.6 million after that. And then every year, things just start getting a little more expensive. So that was my commentary on this and the reason for pulling it. I don’t think staff, unless they want to, could come up and talk about it, but we have an old city, and it’s expensive to fix it at today’s construction cost, and then in the future’s cost. So I’m done.
Okay. Want to move for approval? Motion made in second to approve item D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0. Verbal. We’ll move on to conduct of business.
Item 6A, waive first reading and introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 8.36, Small Wireless Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way and Utility Easements in Public and Private Properties to Title VIII Streets, Sidewalks, and Right-of-Way, and adopt a resolution with Small Wireless Facilities Design and Siding Guidelines, Engineering Design Standards, and Standard Conditions of Approval.
Good evening.
Director Smith.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Darcy Smith, and I am the city’s Community and Economic Development Director. Tonight, I will be providing you with a report for the Small Wireless Facility Regulations. The agenda for my presentation tonight will first begin with stating the objective for tonight’s item. Next, I will quickly go over the background related to the Federal Communications Commission or FCC order, which altered the federal regulations relating to the small wireless facilities and local jurisdictions regulation of them. I’ll summarize the four Planning Commission meetings and community engagement session that were held to review these items, and the council meeting on May 14th, provide an overview of the draft ordinance and draft resolution, and what changes we’ve made since May 14th, and end with summarizing tonight’s action. And I want to emphasize that while I’m presenting this item tonight and worked mainly on this ordinance, it was a multi-department effort with members of Public Works, including Haywan Ritchie, our city engineer who’s here tonight, and Mark Zaffrono, the city attorney, as well as outside counsel. So the objective for tonight’s item, under conduct of business, is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. That would add a new chapter, 8.36, to the city’s municipal code, Title VIII Streets, Sidewalks, and Rights-of-Way, and adopt a resolution which contains the Small Wireless Facilities Design and Siding Guidelines, Engineering Design Standards, and Standard Conditions of Approval. So I’ll quickly review the background of the federal regulation. As I mentioned in my last presentation, the small wireless facilities have emerged over the past roughly two years as demand for wireless service and speed has increased. These complement or stretch the macro towers or facilities which were built out beginning in the 90s, and they’re typically mounted on structures that exist already or new smaller structures only in the right-of-way. They have small antennas, small supporting cabinets, and I want to emphasize that the safety of these, we’ll often question, is regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission and the FCC. This quickly shows you the visual difference between these newer facilities, which again are smaller, and the larger macro facilities, which the city has been processing for decades. We first received applications for these in 2017, and they were processed under the city’s current zoning code, but those were really designed for the image on the right, which are the macro facilities, which are very dramatically different. Typically, they’re installed either on towers, on tops of buildings, and the screening and regulations of them are very different. So I want to emphasize what you’re doing tonight has been done across the nation. This is how local governments are responding to these changes in federal laws. The next two slides will just quickly summarize the federal regulations, and I provided a great amount of detail last time, but I just want to emphasize the main points, which is that the regulations really clarified, as well as restricted, local governments’ ability to regulate these. Essentially, through shot clocks and deadlines, they make it faster, as well as somewhat easier to deploy these wireless networks. And the regulations really specify what cities can and can’t do. So the city can adopt what are called objective aesthetic standards. Those regulate design and location of these facilities. Those regulations have to be reasonable, no more burdensome than other regulations that are applied to someone’s infrastructure, again, within the rights-of-way. We’re held to a strict standard that our regulations can’t effectively prohibit service or be a barrier to the deployment of that. And again, we have these really restrictive application processing deadlines or shot clocks. 60 days from start to finish, including all the processing, if the facilities are attached to existing poles or structures, and 90 days for new poles. So our community has been aggressively responding to these new rules. I mentioned earlier, we’ve joined the coalition of other cities to try to challenge that federal order. We developed a local website with a lot of information, have an interested parties list. We had the four Planning Commission meetings, a community engagement meeting. We held your city council study session on May 14th, and we really developed this whole new process, the ordinance, the resolution, the application process in response to those regulations. So the Planning Commission was the main body that reviewed the draft regulations and also held three study sessions, really more of an educational component. It was both to educate the commission and was well-attended by the community. Those went back to October, November of last year and January of this year. And again, they were really educational, and the commission played the role of sort of vetting the regulations, reviewing what other cities have done, and I think trying to put forth what I would consider sort of the best practice and the most reasonable set of legislation. So the community engagement session, which was held in January, really was the community’s opportunity to learn more and give us direct feedback. We passed out community input forms, which were handed back, and the real goal that was just to get input about any preferences that the community had and what location preferences they had. So we showed the community some visuals, which you’ll see here, of these different types of facilities, so they could learn more about what they are. Sometimes they’re on top of existing wood utility poles. Sometimes they’re attached to streetlights, as you see in the middle, or sometimes they’re the new freestanding poles, as you’ll see on the right. And it’s important to emphasize that the community expressed some preference. One example, for example, is that they preferred mid-block locations on shared property lines instead of directly in front of someone’s residence or other structure. And we included that exact design glide line. So we did get a lot of really good feedback from the community, and I think we really tried and strive to incorporate that where possible. So the ordinance was driven by some guiding policies. Again, other local municipalities have followed these or adapted them a little bit to be tailored to the needs of the community. But the number-one driving policy principle in this new legislation is to achieve compliance with those new federal laws. And the main thing we’ve done there is develop really objective standards. Also, we developed an application process to ensure that we can comply with those processing deadlines of 60 or 90 days. And also, we established these regulations for design and location. Those address a variety of aesthetic things or siding things, things like the concealment or the screen of these antennas and the associated equipments and cables, the height of them, the size, as I mentioned, location, and mounting. So this ordinance will amend the municipal code. That’s the role of the ordinance. And as I mentioned, it’s included in Title VIII, which regulates city streets. And the Public Works Department will review that wireless facility permit. They typically issue encroachment permits. They are the ones that sort of regulate placement of items or construction in the right-of-way, so they are the most appropriate city department to do this, and they’ve been very engaged in this process. So some of the real key features I want to highlight of the ordinance is the public notice, which is required to be mailed by the city. We didn’t ask the carriers to do that. We will handle our own noticing, mail that out. It’s meant to advise the public of the application, and that’s all, property owners and any occupants or renters within the project site. There’s an appeal process, which I touched upon last time. I’ll go into a little bit more detail here. There’s the right to appeal. And again, we have to process all of those items, including the appeal, within 60 days or 90 days. And we really expect that majority of the applications will be on existing poles, so we will be held to roughly a 60-day processing timeline. So as I mentioned, the director of Public Works, or the designee, the city engineer, would be the decision-maker in this case for the permit. I want to emphasize, we’ll do things we already do now with these applications, such as require the peer review or an independent consultant review. Obviously, we will require compliance with the resolution items, the design and siding standards, and engineering standards that the city put forth, and we will apply standard conditions of approval like we do for other permits. So this shows the application processing timeline and all the things that have to be accomplished within that 60 or 90 days. This is a flow chart, which shows, again, the application process, and what happens if it’s appealed or not appealed. And so again, sort of from the blue beginning to the blue end, it has to be done typically within 60 days. And as I mentioned, if the permit is approved, there’ll be a really robust set of conditions of approval, which are in the resolution, and we made some modifications to those to really ensure that the city’s interests are represented. Conditions of approval run with the permit. They cover really important items like maintenance of the facility, inspection and access by city staff, insurance and indemnity provisions to protect the city, bonds, maintenance obligations, and any required compliance and independent testing to ensure full adherence with the FCC rules related to radio frequency emissions. There are the design and siding guidelines, which are in the resolution. I want to emphasize, those are written away to provide flexibility for the city to respond to many of the different location contexts present in San Bruno. I think if you know the city well, you know we have a variety of different types of neighborhoods and commercial areas, and so when we wrote those, we built in as much flexibility as we could. One of the most important things with these, again, we can regulate aesthetics, is ensure concealment to the maximum extent feasible. We want to try to avoid any over-concentration, so one antenna set per facility or structure, and we strive for a locational separation of about 300 feet. There’s a policy that the equipment should be located entirely on the pole in a vertical arrangement to avoid kind of over clustering it more horizontally. And again, the shielding or concealment is really important in those guidelines. And last, if there is other equipment that’s undergrounded already, some areas of cities newer have that, then we can require undergrounding where that’s already occurred. So another key feature of the design and siding guidelines is that these installations can’t damage existing city street trees. Set the maximum height, 50 feet. If there are new, brand-new poles, which may come forward, that those replicate the materials, colors, and finish of any similar infrastructure, like if they’re steel poles, then the new pole should be steel and not some color that doesn’t fit in with the existing infrastructure. And we did install siding location preferences. This is largely resulted in community engagement, in which industrial and commercial districts are at the highest-ranked preference, and residential neighborhoods, specifically single-family or duplex neighborhoods, are at the lowest or least preferred locations. So that concludes my quick summary of the ordinance and resolution. I’ll spend the rest of the presentation covering your feedback at the May 14th meeting. So one of the items that council discussed in the most amount of detail was the maximum height. I think we gave you some feedback that we really need an objective standard, and our recommendation was 50 feet, but I heard from councils that that appeared acceptable because that was within the federal height limit. I want to emphasize, we may see lower applications, and we will try to encourage those where the existing infrastructure is lower, but there may be technically infeasible reasons why it can’t be that low. So we just want to be able to work on a case-by-case basis to determine the best height. The next item that council discussed was public notification. There was discussion about changing the radius nosing to 500 feet or other alternatives such as door hangers or notices on poles using other technology. But the standard for public notification when required is 300 feet. It is a mailed notice, so yes, the postage can be expensive. We will consider postcards, which are actually cheaper to mail and cheaper for all the paper. They’re actually read more easily by the public when they get them, so we’ll look into that, see if we can do that. We also will require the carriers to post notices on poles. That can be effective for folks walking around the site or in the neighborhood. We will require the carriers to do that. But we will maintain that our recommendation is 300 feet. We think that’s important for consistency with other required noticing. And last, again, we changed the ordinance to require the placement of the notice on that pole. So the council discussed the appeals process in a lot of detail, asked for more information about the appeals process, how that would actually work if someone filed an appeal, asking for council notification if that did happen, and discussed the fee. So the staff recommendation is to have an appeals fee that’s consistent with the lowest appeals fee in the city for administrative decisions, which is currently $225. And that’s, again, on the lowest range. And the appeals process that we’ve proposed for any appeals that are filed is detailed in the staff report, but I’ll cover the five main steps on these next two slides. So if an appeal is filed, it’s submitted to the city manager’s office within the prescribed time limit in the ordinance. We would distribute that appeal, which typically would be in writing, to the council for informational purposes, and obviously give it to the applicant, distribute it to relevant staff. We would then have staff prepare a recommendation after reviewing the appeal and getting any response by the applicant. Sometimes appeals raise new information or new questions that we would need to research and get answers to. And last, we’ve proposed that the city manager actually schedules and holds a public hearing that would include the appellant, the staff, and the applicant, and then after receiving that testimony in a public forum, the city manager would render a decision. And again, that decision could be, as you know, to overturn the decision or approval, add new conditions of approval based on new information or certain circumstances. But the appeal process would end with the distribution of that final decision to the city staff and city council, appellant and applicant, which is a common process. So council also raised some concerns about damage to any city infrastructure, because again, these are in the right-of-way, and often they involve construction, and sometimes public infrastructure could potentially be damaged through installation work. So we did make revisions to the conditions of approval to just ensure that any damage is restored within a time period that we think is reasonable, and again, we think that will ensure our interests are protected. And last, staff, including the city attorney and our outside counsel, made a few just final changes to the ordinance and the resolution. We did thoroughly review the changes requested by AT&amp;T Verizon in their last set of letters, and again, today. Well, we’ve made a few very minor changes to ensure that we’re really following the best practices. I will say the majority of the changes that were requested by Verizon and by AT&amp;T have been rejected as just unnecessary at this point. For example, they did not want any public notification. We believe we’re fully within our legislative authority to require public notification. They also really raised some concerns about the appeal and really wanted no appeals process, and we refused to grant that request. So I want to emphasize, we have reviewed all the requests. At this point, we fully understand this is kind of a new ordinance and new technology, so to the extent it’s actually put in practice, we may need to revise the resolution. But based on the applications that we have been processing to date, we do believe that our ordinance and specifically the resolution, the design and siding standards are practical and can be applied successfully as written. I think what we can’t control is changes in technology. So antennas change. Right now, we’re only seeing 4G deployments, 5G. We do not have an exact timeframe for that even being deployed in San Bruno, but we are not getting applications for that right now, and don’t anticipate we will any time in the next, in this calendar year. So with that, we don’t know what exactly those antennas will be designed for, but I do think if we get changes in technology, such as antennas that are 5G or different types of antennas, that we would need to revise the resolution, which could be easily done through a council action. So in conclusion, our recommendation tonight is for you to take action, and specifically to waive the first reading, introduce this ordinance that would add Chapter 8.36 to the city’s municipal code, and adopt the resolution with the Small Wireless Facilities Design and Siding Standards, the Engineering Design Standards, and the Standard Conditions of Approval, which are all in one resolution. And that concludes my staff report. I’d be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for your report. We do have public comment with council. We do have public comment with council. Do the chair, before we open it up for public comment, I was going to see if I could get council's concurrence to perhaps either waive or extend the amount of time allowed to speakers. I know that there are some people in the audience that have been very dutiful of coming to these meetings. This may be their last opportunity to weigh in, and I know in the past, we've kind of cut them a little short. So since we don't have a huge crowd and we have a few items...
Well, let's be this way, I don't even know how many yet. I was going to ask the city clerk and then circle back around, so why don't I do that first?
We have five speaker cards at the moment. Mr. Riekel, did you want to speak? Okay, five speaker cards.
Yeah, so with five, yes, then they should have the three minutes. Are you asking to have that extended?
I think if people want to go beyond the three minutes, I was going to ask that we allow them to continue for this particular issue, because I know it is...
And it is, but I'd like to have some limits so everybody's treated equitably. If somebody stood here for 10 minutes and somebody stood for two, that's not fair. I want to make sure everybody gets an equal amount of time.
Five minutes? Okay, five minutes.
Okay. So I guess the chair, I've been told, can do as they wish, but we have five people, so I'm going to hold it to those five, though, that have up to five minutes. And at five minutes, that needs to stop, please. So, because it's going to take us some time. If you don't use it all, of course. No, you can't yield it to somebody else, but we'll give those people, each person that has put in a speaker card, up to five minutes. The city clerk will start the timer. There is a yellow light that will flash, and that is a 30-second. 30 seconds. So, but we're going to hold to once the red light's on, okay? So we have five speakers, and we're going to hold it to that. Please.
Simon Mazzola, followed by Allison Mazzola.
It's all you. It's your time. Absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and staff.
Evening.
I am still grateful for the city council's overturning of the grant of the permit of 123 Elm and granting our appeal, so I want to recognize that. But I also want to say, I'm very disappointed with the direction that we've gone in since then with this ordinance. It is a red carpet to telecom. My primary concern was to prevent 5G from being installed in residential neighborhoods. And we challenged the permit, we won, that was good news. Since then, the ordinance and what it will do has radically changed what you voted on. You voted to uphold the appeal to keep 5G out of residential neighborhoods. What this ordinance does is it allows it in so many aspects. A municipal government has basically two powers to resist this type of incursion into our neighborhoods, where we sleep, where our children play. Those are aesthetics and safety. And at the beginning of this process, the city did not seem to be fully aware of what it could do with aesthetics. And I think I had a small part in educating the city on what it could do, and it took action, and it granted the appeal. Again, I'm grateful for that. But what this ordinance does is it waters down that ability, that one-of-two powers you have, and it turns it into a roadmap for the telecom industry to come into our neighborhoods and to deploy equipment that is dangerous on many levels and is unwanted. The ordinance, most shamefully, removes from the public view what is going on. At least with our existing process, there was a public notice requirement of it appearing before the planning commission, so it had to be publicized. Then anyone could attend the planning commission, and then if there was an appeal, it came here, which was also publicized and decided. This new ordinance removes all of that, and I think that's just absolutely wrong. It's not the first time I've said it, and because nothing's changed, I really feel that no one's listening. You may hear the words, but no change has been made. As much as I disagree with the ordinance, there are ways it could be made a lot better. You could make it public, but you haven't. You could make the process something where every application shows up on the city website, but you haven't done that. It's a very simple thing to do, but you haven't done it. You could make the process completely transparent, but you haven't done that either. You could make the appeal process more fair to your residents, who will be the ones challenging it. Having any kind of fee, even though this fee is less, and I appreciate that, having any fee is unreasonable. Your residents shouldn't have to pay to challenge this stuff. The ordinance really undercuts your ability to call something aesthetically unpleasing. If the direction of this ordinance was correct in that the city doesn't have the ability to make subjective decisions, every court decision that has favored cities rejecting telecom in certain areas would be wrong, and yet we know that over and over, courts will give discretion to city governments to reject, for aesthetic purposes, these kinds of ordinances. But what you're about to adopt doesn't do that. Taking this matter away from the public and putting it in such a situation where you will have applications that the public won't see, they will be granted, any appeals will very likely go in favor of the telecom, I think that's a travesty. You don't need to do it. You shouldn't do it, but you're about to. While I am appreciative of what the city council has done in this regard, I have to say, this is not your best work. You can do a lot better for your citizens. When you came to us each and asked us to vote for you, you told us you would protect us, and you would govern this city in a way that made sense for its residents. This ordinance doesn't do that. This is not your best work.
Allison Fox Mazzola, followed by Leslie Emle.
Good evening. I'm here as a Lorax. I speak for the trees. While this evening, I'm not only speaking for the trees, I'm speaking for the children of San Bruno. This is a very sad time for the children of San Bruno. Our third school superintendent in four years has just departed, leaving the school district dangling, as all of their plans to improve education for our children are now on hold. The natural environments which children need to thrive are in danger of crumbling due to deterioration from RF radiation. San Bruno City Park is in almost constant use by wildlife and by humans. Children ride their bikes, play on the playground, float boats in the stream, lie in the grass. Many species of birds live there. Now imagine all of those picnic spots without any trees. A four-year experiment by Waldman Selsom in 2016 clearly demonstrated cell tower radiation caused the death of nearby trees over time. Birds have feathers that can act as antenna and amplify the negative effects of RF. There has been a steady deterioration of the world's bird population, with now 40% of bird species under critical threat. Can you imagine our city without any birds? A cell tower was placed in the Butterfly Sanctuary in Monterey last year. In the one year since its placement, the number of butterflies there has gone from 800 to 650. At this rate, all of the monarch butterflies in that area will be gone in only four years. Insects, the base of the food chain, appear particularly susceptible to RF radiation, especially 5G wavelengths, which are the size of the insect and create a damaging resonance effect. Researchers are now attributing RF radiation from cellular telecommunications as a contributing cause of bee colony collapse disorder. Bees are a critical pollinator species. Of the 100 crops that provide 90% of the world's food supply, 71 are pollinated by bees. Can you imagine a summer without any fruit to eat? No peaches, no watermelons, no strawberries, no berries, no cherries, no apples. Now, we find that new city ordinances have made no provisions for protecting the health of our youngest children while they are at school. Cell towers may now be placed near the school campuses, exposing our students to radiation six hours a day for 13 years. Most cities have made a stipulation that these towers not be placed anywhere near schools. I could not find that anywhere in your new ordinance. Our schools are lackluster and have been. Our natural environment will crumble, and now our children will be exposed to this radiation for hours each day. What is left to recommend this city to families with young children? I asked a high school student recently why he liked living in San Bruno, and he said, "Well, it's great. I don't hear gunshots every day." Well, I think that's a pretty low bar. I'm sure we could do a lot more for the children of this town.
Thank you. Leslie?
Leslie Emle, followed by Elany Tripsa.
Good evening, council. We've brought you so much information over the last nine months, and it seems to be stagnant at this point. And I would like you very much to take into consideration, as you review tonight's study report, that the codes and ordinances of this city, or any city, should always consider the citizens' best interest above all else. Our ordinances should never be a roadmap for a telecom or any corporation to successfully use our children and citizens as guinea pigs. Our codes and ordinances should have stopgaps and removal clauses on any installations of small cell microwave radiation equipment inside our small neighborhoods, parks, and schools. We shouldn't have it in our small neighborhoods to begin with. That was our original request of you, to keep it outside the jurisdiction of our small neighborhoods, our schools, and our parks. Our codes and ordinances should never show bias or succumb to any corporation, telecom, or those posing as utilities. Our codes and ordinances should always have independent experts and/or engineers associated with an application for any use permit requested. San Bruno needs to serve itself, not a corporation of America, of corporate America, excuse me. In Portland alone, as it was reported by the commissioner, the planning commissioner, at one of the meetings this year, cell towers were placed on a school in Portland, Oregon. Shortly thereafter, seven elementary students contracted cancer and three of their instructors. Your public engagement meeting that we've shown tonight also does not show an entire picture of what this community wants and thinks. There were 17 individuals at that meeting, and the planning commission also noted that to the study commission. Of those 17 people, 75% were our group who have brought our appeal to you. So I don't think this is a real honest view of what's going on with this study group. And as far as RF radiation, if you are not born with a mutation, enough radiation will allow your body to produce a mutation. Mutations in the body cause cancer. They open up cells, they have multiple drivers, they can't be destroyed. I know this firsthand, and I don't want to see this happen to the people of this city or any other city in this United States. Even the prime minister of Brussels, Belgium, put a halt to 5G, and he stated that no corporation was ever going to control his country, nor were they going to be allowed to use their citizens as guinea pigs. This is a reality, and until this is all concluded and all the studies are in, and most of them are in, this is a cancer-causing agent. We have to do something to postpone this or redirect it so it's to our benefit and not to the corporations, the utilities, or the telecoms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elany Tripsa, followed by Russell Stein.
Good evening. Here we are once again. On May 14th, when we had a preview, there were some things addressed, not only by us as the citizens, but also the council members. The first thing that I'd like to point out is that, with all due respect, Ms. Darcy, forgive me, I don't recall your last name, everything that we had requested goes on deaf ears, and to quote something that she actually spoke was, "I was out with a provider to determine the best polls." I'm sorry, I thought you were supposed to be representing us, the citizens of San Bruno, and not being in collusion with Verizon, AT&amp;T, or whoever you happen to take a walk out in the field to see the polls. We had requested, and Mr. Medina, Marty Martino, had requested, "We need to increase the 300. You're so adamant, we need to stay with the 300." Everything should not be the same equal. There, it needs to be addressed, and if you want to have continuity, then address everything else and increase it from the 300 to the 500 or even more, because that's what we require. But you don't listen to what we ask for. Then there was the discussion about the appeals process. You didn't have it last time. Well, what you presented us today is nothing. What you're presenting us is a back door that is open to have the public works just grant automatically the approval. If someone, you know, happens to have a notice somehow, it goes to the city council, and we had requested that, excuse me, to the city manager, we had requested that the city council keeps the right, and now it's only a notification. Where are your rights? We hired you by voting for you for those rights. You need to protect us, not just as a notification, but being active. When there is an appeal, you have to be there representing us, not the city manager. We did not vote for the city manager, he's hired. We voted for the city council members, and that is what we expect, okay? There was another discussion, and I'm going point by point on the last meeting that we had and requested. This was a maximum of 10 years, and then we wanted to have the option of not being able to renew, to have an order enforced of no stay after the 10 years. Where is that? That's not in there, I didn't see it. I don't see anything on aesthetics and safety. Everything that we had requested, where is the protection factor? There isn't. You want to change our process? When it has worked in the past, and all of a sudden, we don't want to have the notice, we don't want the city council, we don't want the planning commission to be informed that we're making the decisions, because that's who we voted. We want the public works department, and we want the city manager. That is not acceptable. There is no transparency here. I am sorry. I wasn't going to speak today. I was hoping, because I spoke last time, and I'm the one that knocked on the doors and started this whole thing back in June. I was hoping I didn't have to speak today. I was hoping that we were heard last time, but you know what? I keep saying this each time we have a meeting. And Ms. Darcy, everything that we say goes on deaf ears. She brings forth the same thing she did last time in May. I made a list of all the points, each person that spoke, and I understand. Ms. O'Connor, our hands are tied because of the feds. Was your comment last time? No, it may be to an extent. We still have some things that we can't. My previous speakers allude to that. It's like, the two things that we still have, aesthetics and safety. Where are those addressed? How are we, what's our safety? I am sorry. I am appalled that every time we have discussions, and not only us as the citizens of San Bruno, but you as well, as the city council has requested, and none of the things that we have requested and we wanted on both sides have been heard on the right.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you guys for all you do for this community. I want to say I really appreciate all the time you guys take. At the same time, I want you guys to please consider that you are this community. You are what saves us and protects us from corporate America, from money, from, you are the safety net for our community, for our children, for our families. You know, I want to say this, asbestos. For years and years and years, I worked around it as I was a young man, because people thought... For years and years and years, I worked around it as I was a young man, because people thought it was a great insulator. It's a dangerous thing. I saw a lot of posts on social media about, well, it causes cancer, it doesn't cause cancer. So, you know, I'm not a scientist. I went and I looked this stuff up, and it does appear like it could cause cancer. It's a major concern for me. So I realize that our city's job is to protect us from getting sued. Your job is to protect us and our safety for our community and our children, and I hope you'll do so. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the five? Okay. So at this time, to the council, questions of staff, for the rapport or follow-up questions? I know I have some, but does somebody? Michael?
Through the chair. Thank you. So I did have a few questions. So in -- I noticed there was language in our ordinance now that does state preferences of where we would like to see these things placed, and I was wondering if we could push that language to be a little bit stronger. I've looked at some related ordinances that do say that they do not want them in neighborhoods and puts a burden on the provider to demonstrate that there is a business need. I believe our ordinance on the macro towers does require them to provide that. I know I saw that in the appeal material, where they did have maps that showed that they had dead spots. I don't know if that's implied in this ordinance, or if it's something that we could state in this ordinance that if they do want to be in a neighborhood, that they have to demonstrate that need?
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So unfortunately, the federal order, the FCC order that the city is challenging along with dozens of other cities throughout the United States, does not apply to cell towers. It only applies to the small cell installations. And that order says that the cities cannot effectively prohibit or require cell carriers to demonstrate that they have a business need in order to locate their small cell facility. And that is the reason why the small cell ordinance does not include the same provision as the city's ordinance that addresses only cell towers. So the short answer is no, that would not, that would be a violation of federal law.
You want to follow up? I mean, I do have more.
I just, I get upset when we, all of us collectively, or even individually, are accused of not keeping the safety of our residents in mind. We live here, too. We all do. I have children here. We all have children. We all went through the schools. I mean, to think that we don't keep safety in mind as the very first thing is very insulting. So I just want to say that. We have to work within the federal laws as much, I mean, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make it the best we can for the city while still working under federal laws. We don't like the federal laws. We, you know, and we're working with other cities to get them changed, and we are with you as every way we can be at being concerned about our kids and our own health and welfare. But we're -- and I know I said before, our hands are tied. Our hands are tied. We have not only our council, we've had outside council, we've had many things, many people telling us, "These are the restrictions you have to work under." So I'm just saying those things. When you said, "Don't have them in small neighborhoods," every neighborhood in San Bruno is a small neighborhood. We, I mean, we can't say, "Don't come to San Bruno." So I believe we, as a collective council, are working the best we can, as staff is. And we haven't passed this ordinance yet. That's what this meeting is about, to hear you and to make changes. We haven't done anything yet, so please, give us a chance. And my question is, putting those things aside, on page eight, one, two, three, the third bullet point, it says facilities should be no closer than 300 feet away radically, I assume that means in a circle, from another small wireless facility. Is there a reason for the 300 feet? Page eight, bullet point three of the staff report. So in other words, can we make it 500 feet? Can we make it 1,000 feet? Why is it 300 feet?
So 300 feet is a best practice that other cities have considered recently.
But so what? I mean--
But I will say it's on the smaller end, so you--
Can we say 1,000 feet? You can only have one pole every 1,000 feet?
Well, I mean, you would just, it would just be a question of whether it's reasonable. We had a carrier say it's not reasonable, so--
I don't really care.
We could certainly review it in more detail. I don't think we can answer that question definitively tonight, but if that was your feedback, we could look into it.
So if I may take a stab at that, so--
I'm sorry, Mark. Could you speak into the--
Sure, sorry.
It's hard to hear you.
Usually, nobody complains that my voice is too soft. So every additional foot that you add to that looks to both the carriers and potentially a court as an effective prohibition. So what that means is that if you say, "Well, if it's not 300, why not 500? Why not 1,000?" At a certain point, and we don't know where that is, a court is going to say, "You know what? 1,000 feet apart is too much. 300 feet is okay. 500 feet might be okay." But one of the things we're trying to do is to not only protect the city and the city council, but also to protect the residents from having to spend taxpayer dollars to defend litigation. And if you, all of the money that the city has expended supporting the appeal that the four or five of you granted on behalf of the residents has come from taxpayer dollars, and it's a substantial amount of money, and that's money that the city is not going to recoup from anybody. So those are general fund revenues, and you were just here at a budget presentation tonight when you were told that there's a deficit in the general fund. So one of the goals of city staff is to minimize the chances that you're going to get sued as a result of this ordinance, because the fact is, you're already being sued. So we received a letter today at 3:00 from Verizon saying, "We don't like your ordinance. We think we need to make all these changes." And I'm looking at that saying, "Great. If we don't say yes to this, they're going to just keep suing us, and taxpayers are going to keep spending money." So no. Instead, what the city said is, "We're going to hold the line. We're not going to do what Verizon is asking. We may have to look at the ordinance and the resolution again at some point in the future, but we can't go so far that we can't convince Verizon, in the context of that federal litigation where the city is being sued, to ultimately dismiss their case and find a way to resolve it, as the city council has indicated." So we're walking a tight rope between trying to save taxpayer dollars and to follow federal law at the same time, and not create incentives for Verizon and other carriers to either continue their lawsuits against the city or to sue us anew. We got a letter from AT&amp;T earlier today as well, just about the same time this afternoon. Fifteen things in the letter that they wanted the city to change in our ordinance. The city is saying, "We're not going to change any of those things in the ordinance, at least not right now. We're going to recommend introduction of the ordinance as it is." So that's the difficulty that the city is facing in balancing these needs. So it's not an all or nothing. It has to be somewhere in the middle. And we could consider a larger distance, but then you risk a claim that there's an effective prohibition and risk litigation by doing that.
Is it appropriate to ask you how much, ballpark how much we have spent already on this?
Yes, it is, and I would be happy to tell you if I knew anything other than a guess, but I don't want to guess, and I certainly don't want to do it in public. It is a not insignificant five-figure amount.
Okay. That, thank you. Okay.
I seeded the floor, but I'm not done, so--
Michael, please hit in.
Thank you. Councilmember Medina had forwarded us an article regarding what San Rafael was doing, and I looked at their ordinance, and it was very, very similar to ours, I think included a lot of the same components. But theirs made a further distinction about prioritizing arterial streets, meaning that those would be preferred over the small residential streets. And again, I know that they'll probably go back to their, you know, that we're denying them, but the real benefit of 5G comes when you have clustered groups. So it makes a lot less sense from a carrier perspective to put a 5G antenna where you have a low density. It makes a lot more sense in high density. So if they're talking about enabling smart cars, self-driving cars, those would be more likely to operate on those arterial streets. And I don't think they, they'd have a harder time arguing that that was, you know, that we're somehow denying them, right? We're actually pushing them toward where they really should be. I mean, 5G makes sense in a stadium. It doesn't make sense in a bedroom. So I don't know if we could look a little bit more into that and see if we can maybe sort of narrow down our bands a little bit more. I know neighborhoods are already at the bottom of the list, but if, you know, we say, you know, start on those arterial streets and then, you know, absolute last possibility is the residential streets?
Sure.
Can you get away with that?
So we do not have streets listed in our prioritization, and we can look at adding in arterial streets as a higher priority item. Number one priority right now is industrial and districts, and so we can put arterial streets close to the top with that.
Okay. All right. And, you know, one of the questions that came up, too, was, you know, about what we lose with our ability to, you know, weigh in on the, what is it? The--
Aesthetics.
Aesthetics, thank you. Weighing in on the aesthetics of these things. And what we saw on the appeal was that, you know, there was, I think, very little consensus initially among the council about, "What are we going to call ugly in this case?" It had gone out, the planning commission had said, "Yeah, it looks fine." You know, staff guidelines said, "Yeah, you know, it looks like what we would expect." But the council kicked it around. We got input from the public, and we decided, "No, it's really not acceptable." And as a result, Verizon came back with brand-new drawings. They expanded their possibilities, whereas they had initially told us, "It's either got to be Pole A or Pole B." They came back and said, "Well, we could put up a pole." And they said, "Well, it's got to look like this." And then later came back and said, "Well, actually, it could look like this." And it was a lot nicer. And had we had an opportunity to actually reevaluate what they were presenting, maybe at that point, we could have said, "This is now more acceptable." Unfortunately, we went a different route, and now we're, yeah, we're in litigation. So, I mean, that is what it is. We made that decision to go that route, and I think we're all the wiser for it, and we understand a little bit better about what our limitations are and what our, you know, what parameters we can and can't weigh in on. But I'm wondering if staff really feels that this ordinance is specific enough and provides enough concrete detail so that now the people that are going to make the decision can look at something and say, "This does meet the city's definition of an acceptable device." And as technologies evolve, these antennas get smaller, or they get, you know, more stealthy, they get safer. Are we going to be able to keep up with that and say, "Okay, what was okay two years ago is no longer okay. This is now the new standard." And ultimately, I want to make sure that whatever they bring to San Bruno is going to be no less safe, no less attractive than what they're putting up in Hillsborough or Atherton or somewhere else.
So I do believe there's some sort of standardization around the antennas and installations, but I will say it's rapidly evolving. So they might have said, "Well, we can do this, and now we can do this," just like the antennas. They're evolving, right? So I do think this is an area of regulation where it, you're always chasing the technology. But at this point in time, I do believe this ordinance and this set of design and signing guidelines are sort of the best approach based on the applications that we're seeing right now. And so we have eight applications from Verizon that we put through the test of this ordinance and resolution. And we've also met with other carriers, and we've seen what their proposals may be submitted once the ordinance is in place. So I do believe that we have the, something that's going to work. But I will say, I think it's just an evolving technology. So will we be back here in a year potentially looking at changing the resolution? Possibly. It's just evolving so fast. Part of it is some things actually can get smaller. Some things might get a little bigger. It's just hard to predict. I will say that what I've seen over the years is just, things traditionally get a little smaller, but they might have different designs. So, like, they showed us a steel pole where everything's kind of encapsulated, which looks great. I don't think that existed a year ago.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to add to what the Community Development Director said, the, there are two actions before you tonight. One of them is to introduce the ordinance. The ordinance really sets the base. The, what you're talking about are the design guidelines, and those are done by resolution, and there's a reason for that. It's so it can be more flexible. In other words, the resolution can be brought back to the city council really at any time. If staff determines, or if there seems to be some need to amend those guidelines to adapt to changing technology, we can do that more quickly. Having said that, the FCC order also makes clear that the city can't regulate technology. All they can do is regulate the aesthetics of what it looks like, and beyond that, those regulations have to be objective. So what the FCC order says is that it shouldn't matter whether it's the city council, whether it's staff, whether it's the city manager looking at a proposal, they should all come to the same conclusion because the standards are objective. So if they meet the objective standards, that's the goal. And the city's goal was to draft objective standards as much as possible with as much possible flexibility as we could muster, but still have those standards be objective so that there is a uniform application of those standards.
And so I think I would want staff to understand that it's based on the previous decisions, that council does expect to hold the carriers to the highest standard available, that we don't expect staff to settle or allow the carriers to come in with something less than their best effort. I think another critical component of that, too, is just going to be the openness and how much information that we can exchange. And so I agree with the speakers who said that getting the information out is critical. And I know that not more than an hour ago, I said, "We need to cut back on our mailings and cut expenses." But I'm wondering if there is maybe an opportunity to create a mailing list for interested parties where we could email notifications of these things as they come in, so that if there are people that are interested, and maybe not just this, but any topic of interest that is a recurring thing for the city, could we have an email list, a distribution list, that would get blasted every time one of these permits comes in, or a new development comes in, or whatever people have an interest in? If we could do that basically at zero cost and still keep that information flowing and keep those details available to the public?
So we'll certainly look into that, council member, but one of the other things, sorry, I don't mean to throw a wet blanket on everything, but I suppose that's what the lawyer is for sometimes. The important thing to realize about that is the FCC order also says that the regulations around small cells can be no more stringent than regulations around any other kind of public infrastructure. So we don't provide a notice on email, or on the website, or on the doors, or to 500 feet or 1,000 feet when PG&E is putting up a pole. We don't do that when the cable department is putting up infrastructure. We don't do that in a whole variety of other situations that are, in essence, the same, or the FCC order believes is the same, as cell towers. So we will certainly look into that. We'll do the best we can. But I just want to make it clear that it's, these are difficult things to accomplish without violating that order, and we're trying not to do that.
Right. And I would argue that if we voluntarily send out an email message and not impose it on the carrier to do a mailing at their cost, it's, I mean, they can't argue that we can't do that if we want to. It puts no, it puts no burden on them for us to voluntarily do that, so.
But I think your point was, too, to expand it not just to cell towers, it was development, it was a broad base.
Right. It could be for anything.
Interest. For example. So then you would cover more, I'm not a lawyer either, but I mean, you cover more of the bases. It's not specified to a entity.
Yeah, sure. We could have a dog lovers list, right?
There you go.
They get notified about new parks. So, and that was it for my questions and comments. I do take the comments from the public to heart. I do take the comments from the public to heart. I do wish there was more we could do, but the rules did change on us as well. And, you know, I really wish we could address more of the issues. But I think, as most of you know, some of those things are just very specifically taken away from our purview, and we're not allowed to make those part of our of this ordinance. We're not allowed to deny applications based on those things, but we are allowed to weigh in on them, and I believe that is something that we are doing. We continue to advocate as as a city, along with other cities, to change some of these rules at the federal level. And I believe the council is still in favor of pursuing those things, and we will continue to do those. And wherever we have an opportunity, we will share your voices with the with the powers that actually do have the ability to change these things.
Marty?
It's, this is one of the hardest things in since I've been on the council of dealing with, yet, here I go. So the thing that to really remember, this was ordered by the FCC. The title of the order is Accelerating Wireless Broadband Deployment by Removing Barriers to Infrastructure Investment. It's spelled out right there. They thought very well on how to take this decision as much as they could out of council council's hands across the country. We're allowed aesthetics, safety of the pole, not safety of the equipment. So it's not deaf ears that the council has been hearing you, people that are saying that the health effects, the health effects. We are specifically not allowed to say, we agree with you, to stop that from happening in our neighborhoods. So I wanted to make that very, very clear because that's that's very, very important. And and I think we all take it very personally when people are loose with their words and broad with their accusations. So we don't have deaf ears. We're put in this position, and my question's to staff. Currently today, we're here dealing with this ordinance because we have a timeframe to meet. We need to do it now. We have to do it at, I mean, help help us, help me and maybe the public understand why we're here at this time and what the consequences of not taking action are.
So in part, we are here and this entire project launched because the council prior to October, I want to say it was almost in September, directed staff to undertake a pro a process to provide as much flexibility for the city to regulate small cell wireless as possible under, at that time, the pending FCC regulations. And so that launched the entire effort with the Planning Commission, the public engagement sessions, because we knew that FCC regulations would be coming out. It would limit our ability, but we needed objective standards out there. And without any standards, we were concerned that we would not be providing any guidance. And so we did publish interim guidance on our website, and this this ordinance and resolution would replace those interim guidelines. This provides us, at the end of the day, with objective criteria and gives preference to where we would like small cells to go. We cannot prohibit them. We cannot develop rules that amount to an effective prohibition, but we can put boxes around it, and that's what we're attempting to do here. And it does provide a prioritization. Now, at the end of the day, can a small cell go in a residential neighborhood if they meet the objective criteria? We need to be absolutely transparent about that. The answer to that is yes. But we are giving preference. We are giving design standards, and we are providing through this ordinance and resolution more criteria upon which to base our decisions. And we're providing a process that meets the federal shot clocks. I think the worst-case scenario is to leave our current system in place, and then we run the risk of more things being deemed approved because we don't have a process where there can be a review, there can be an appeal process, albeit one through the city manager's office that meets the shot clocks, but it is an appeal process. Right now, the or prior to the interim guidelines, the current appeal process, a notice meeting, we would likely not meet the 60- or 90-day shot clock. And so this provides more control than we frankly would have without the interim guidelines than based on the new FCC rules. So we are better because of it, but we cannot do a prohibition like some members of the community want us to do. Unfortunately, we can't do that.
Got it. So when does the shot clock begin? I remember when I was in Public Works, we would have somebody come to the counter with an encroachment permit application. They bring it in, and it would be like, well, you're missing this, you're missing that, you don't have your insurance. And it's kind of like, okay, bring it back. So is that deemed as a complete? Is there is there a time when the application is deemed complete?
So there is a time when it's deemed complete, but the shot clock starts on the date the application's accepted by the city.
So we don't, when do when do we have to accept it, then?
When they submit a duly filed application. So our ordinance strongly recommends, but we can't require a voluntary pre-submittal conference, and that is when the city staff would sit down with an applicant or go through their application, let them know what's missing, point out incomplete items. And they actually have to schedule an appointment with the city to submit it. They can't, like, FedEx it in and drop a bunch of them on us. We would screen that application, and assuming that they're not missing anything glaring, we would accept the application at that appointment.
Got it.
And that's when the shot clock starts.
The shot clock ends when they get an answer or?
No, the shot clock would end when the decision is finalized. So if it's appealed, it's technically after that appeal process happens, and then the final decision is rendered.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So 60 days for an existing pole, 90 days for a new pole for that appeal to be denied or approved?
Correct. Yeah. So it's basically really start to finish.
So we're in a situation where currently there there are nine applications in the queue?
There's nothing that's been submitted because we don't, without the ordinance in place, we can't accept any applications.
Previously, we, there were one that got, that 123 Linden, which we're being sued on, and there was a number of the other ones?
Eight.
One was approved. One south, one antenna was approved over?
123 Elm, not 12, not 123 Linden.
Oh, I'm sorry.
123 Elm.
My fault.
Was the appeal that council sustained.
All right. So how does this highest-ranked work work? So a carrier brings in two applications. One is on Street A and one's on Street B. And how does it, the ranking work? You have in one of your slides there. Yes, the the last bullet.
Yes.
How does that really work? Like?
So it would be just one application proposed, not multiple. But if an application came in and it was, the the application was for citing a facility in a location, let's say, for example, it was a multifamily neighborhood, but it was adjacent to a commercial district, zoning district, we would have a conversation with the carrier about, well, are there poles in the commercial district that this could alternatively be cited on? Because usually they're looking at an area, sometimes it's a block long or two blocks long, where they can cite it. They have needs within a given street or two or three streets.
So we would prefer that we would rank it and say, please put it over here?
Yes, yes.
And they would say, no, we want it over here?
They would give us a technic, a reason, which would have to be technically infeasible, that they cannot move it. And sometimes it's that it's on a pole that has too much existing equipment or it's too high voltage. They would have to give us technically infeasible.
Which happened on 123 Elm. They they had the presentation of where all these different ones could be, and it came down to here. So it, there's no rule, that doesn't really have much power in approving.
It does.
It does?
Well, it does in the sense that you go through the exercise to vet all alternatives with a ranking of, we prefer this alternative location with the highest priority. And they have to get, it's sort of like a process of elimination, if you will.
Okay, all right. Yet they could still say, no, we need it over here in this residential neighborhood.
But they have to prove it's infeasible.
Yeah, yeah.
And we sort of have to vet that, and we can hire consultants to question their proof.
Got it. And we can't stop that by the FCC. That's something that.
Correct.
I think our city manager said it to be totally transparent. We cannot stop it legally. For 5G, this has nothing to do with 5G. This is, because that was in the email we got today from one of the carriers. It's the first time I heard 5G use. So it, this is a different technology and.
So my understanding is that 5G is still small cell. What you heard from the Community Development Director earlier is when we receive a 5G application, and we have not received a 5G application, and as 5G technology enhances, we, there may be something about the size, the shrouding, or the replacement of 5G that means that we need to make a change to our resolution. But it is quite possible that a 5G small cell application can fit within the guidelines that we have here.
Right. And we, from my limited understanding of it, they would need a lot of 5G antennas for it to work properly. Michael? No? You're the tech guy.
Well, yeah.
The reason, the reason that's that's generally cited is because these antennas have a very limited serviceable area. And so in order to service an area, you have to put a lot of them in there. They have a very short, and I think that's part of where that 300-foot.
Got it.
Number comes from is that that's about how much they can service.
Okay. Thank you for that. So I'm going to go back to the comments that we provided to staff at the previous council study session, and the height. So previously, we said no to 123 Elm because of aesthetics, that it stuck up too high, it looked odd. It just didn't fit the neighborhood because that's all we really could do at that time. We got sued regardless, right? And so I I still think that we should have a height limitation there because it does look odd, and that's aesthetic. So we could say it needs to fit the neighborhood. And if it's too big and too high, it doesn't fit the neighborhood. The other comment is about public noticing, and I really appreciate Michael, our council and Salazar's thinking of, and it's exactly what I wrote down, we should have a website that has all the encroachment permits on there. It's a map, and you could look for whatever you want, but cell towers for sure, and it could be a link to an email list, and an alert can go out when the application is deemed accepted or pre-conference or wherever it's first discussed. And that goes onto the website, an email goes out, and it shows a map with where all the cell tower applications and encroachment permits are. It shouldn't take that much more time. So it was interesting that the use of SMC alert, if there was a way of of somebody could use that technology to provide that noticing, maybe we could talk about how we can limit as a user that I don't want that type of SMC alert of a mountain lion or something else. But I'm not sure if you could fix the limit on what SMC alerts you're receiving. Is that possible?
I think the city manager and I are having some concerns right now.
Yeah.
Not on the technology.
Yeah.
But using the alert aspect.
Yeah. Couple of heart palpitations.
I totally understand, and I totally agree that we need various communication avenues to reach our constituencies and our customers of various city services. The idea of text alerts or email blast alerts is something that we really need to look into. And I agree that for various services, having the ability to text customers, like if we cancel a recreation class to be able to text people that signed up, or if we if we counsel a youth-based class being able to text the parents. We currently do not have that that technology. I would certainly hesitate using SMC alert because SMC alert is meant for.
Emergencies.
Emergencies, urgent matters, matters where it's of a safety or extreme important necessity to alert the either a specific neighborhood or citywide. And people sign up for that under that guise that this is more of a, if something comes over here, it's an important matter that I need to pay attention to.
Okay.
So I would hazard to use that for an application has been submitted. And so I just don't think that that is the right system. I also would hazard to include in the reso or the ordinance that we will employ a technology that we currently don't have in place. And so I totally understand and get councils' suggestion that we need to look into having text and email alert systems. I would hazard to, I would hazard to make any change to anything that is before council for adopting for something that we don't have in place. And so we can certainly look into systems like that. I will tell you to place a requirement that we will send, that we will have email signup lists and send alerts for all various types of activity. Given our staffing capacity, given our working, I would be. Setting up a system that is prone to failure and that we will be consistently inconsistent at and have people complaining that I didn't receive alert, thus something was invalid or, and so I just think we just need to be very thoughtful, careful when we look into something like that, that it is something that we have the resources, both money and manpower, to maintain on a consistent basis. So I totally get that council is saying, you know, look into email and text alert systems, and we can very well do that and, you know, put that in the hopper in our work plan as appropriate.
Okay. I I agree. I was just kind of brainstorming a little bit here. I do think that we should be increasing our public noticing to 500 feet minimum. And then if so be it, let's make it a minimum 500 for everything, if not 1,000. But 500 is, seems to be a compromise. And if if council agrees to make it 500 feet, 300 feet is six houses on each side. And that that was probably back in the, well, it's just not enough. It doesn't seem like it should be that much more expensive. I think a postcard's like 37 cents, so $2 more, I think. And the and the postage is cost-recoverable from the applicant? Is the labor involved to post door hangers recoverable from the applicant?
I do not know the answer to that question, but postage certainly is. Right now, our practice is that for development projects, the developer has to do the noticing.
Except for.
When when they have community meetings. When we're holding our own meetings, we do the noticing, and so that is recoverable. At the last meeting, moving to 500 did come up. The takeaway that staff had was a concern with consistency, and staff did say that we would look into that, moving to a higher number. But we wouldn't want to look into what it applies to, are we doing it across the board, truly what the implications are for that. And so this is at 300 because it's keeping with our practice citywide.
Marty, do you mind just for a sec?
Sure.
On that, my my recollection of the 300 to 500 was just what was stated up here is that just having a broader radius, but that I understand staff said to be consistent. So it was, well, is this 300? So it was, well, is this 300, is that 400, is that 600? And then we don't want to have something. So I, my memory is telling me the council said, well, let's go back and look at it across the board, whether it's a development project, or whether it was a cell tower, to have it on a consistent basis, so that there's never an ambiguity to somebody who's been here one year or one month, when they're having to, to perform the task. So is that what staff understood as well? That's what I.
Yes. That is, that is what we understood, is to go back and take a look at it. And specific to small cells, if we're talking about technology that has a radius of about 300 feet, what is the rationale for making the notice 500 feet? And so we want to kind of bet all of those questions as well.
So, may I ask a technical question? So if, if after, say we pass this the way it is, afterwards, the staff goes through everything and decides 500 feet is great, we can amend this to 500 feet? Okay. Just, because, just so we know.
I understand the transparency component where, and how the city manager isn't elected. We are elected. We are the last word. I, I would like to keep that, yet it's clear that we would have some serious timing problems. And I'm okay to, or maybe, maybe my question should be this. How often would we have to have these meetings where the appeal would come to the city? Every week?
Unknown how many applications we will, we will receive. Unknown how many appeals we will have. Widening the notice may increase the number of appeals. I mean, it's truly something that, that we can't answer. I can tell you from experience how difficult it is to schedule a special city council meeting, and you guys experienced how we periodically poll for a special meeting, and everybody has different commitments during the week. And so I do think that it, it will be a real challenge to get council together in the shot clocks. And remember, the entire process, including the appeal, needs to take place within that 60 to 90-day shot clock. And so we have developed a process that provides an appeal mechanism, but that is also in alignment with the new FCC rules. And we do have other processes that do not go to the city council for, for final review. The example we gave in, in the staff report was an appeal of a massage permit revocation. And so there are practices and professional staff in place that make decisions that are sometimes final. And as your professional staff, I would say that we have the skills to do that, but I totally understand the conversation of you guys are the, the elected representatives for the community.
So it, it comes down to, as we have these design guidelines, so you have a pole that's 44 feet. It looks like the, I'm sorry, could you bring back? Not that one, that's kind of ugly. It looks like one of, the one on the left's ugly. That's the one we rejected previously. Similar to that, it's, I'm, I'm sorry. Excuse me? I'm right here. Yeah. That's similar to the one at 123 Elm that we, based on aesthetics, said, not good. The one in the middle, it looks a little odd, but it doesn't look that bad. Right? I don't know. I'm just, might, expressing my opinion. So if it looked like that, and it was within the height limits, it's going to get passed. And so, I don't know, this may, this may be a little odd, Mr. Mayor, but for our residents who showed up today and spoke on it, you, the one in the middle, would, would you want the council to grant the appeal for, to reject that, based on the way that looks right there? Because I don't think we, I don't know, may I'm going way crazy, but I don't think we can, based on the way that looks. I mean, everybody's looking at me, so I'm gonna stop. So.
I think the city's trying to want to chime in.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the, the object of both the FCC guidelines and the city's ordinances, and, and the guidelines that we've proposed for you to look at tonight, is, is to, unfortunately, to prevent a, a neighborhood poll, or, or a poll at a public meeting about raise your hand, which, which one do we like? Do we not like this? Do we not like that? It's possible that all three of the, in fact, it's, it's likely that all three of the installations that are on display are installations that meet the objective guidelines that the city has adopted. And what the FCC order does, is it prevents opinion from influencing the decision by some people saying, well, I think it's ugly. And other people might say, well, I really like the one on the left better, more than the one in the middle. And somebody says, I like the one on the right more than the one on the left. That's what the guidelines are designed to avoid. And so that's what the city has tried to do, to, you know, propose a resolution with, with the most objective criteria possible. So I think it's important to note that the, the guidelines do not contemplate a neighborhood poll, or a vote, or a veto, that the neighbors have over, over the facility, just as neighbors do not have veto power over any development application. So if that were the case, then a neighbor could come in and say, I object to, you're putting a second story on your house. And then the city would be required to, to go along with, with that neighbor's view. So there, we, we, we can't allow veto, vetoes over installation, so long as they meet the aesthetic objective guidelines.
Got it. It was my poor attempt to just understand how unfortunate we are in this position right So I said my, my piece is there. I would, I would like it to, to remain with the council. Is there a way that we try it with the council, and in the event that it comes to a certain date where there's, we just can't make the meeting, that it defaults to the city manager?
And, and let me just clarify, because the shot clock, does that, does that include business days? Is that Saturday, Sunday are included? What does that 60 days include?
No, it's, it's calendar days.
Calendar days.
And I guess from a legal standpoint.
Holidays, everything counts.
Yes.
Okay.
We, we don't really recommend an appeals process that is uncertain. And, and so I think it's important for both residents and the applicants to have certainty about what the appeals process is. And having something like you suggest can appear arbitrary, and it, it might be seen as arbitrary, or argued, that you're using it arbitrarily and saying, oh, well, we can't meet on that day, so staff will have to do it. So I, I think it's important for the process to be certain.
And it's, it's staff's position that, as its, the ordinance is written, that it should be with the city manager?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So one thing I want to start off with is just as my opinion, so I'm giving you just my opinion. But this is the second time, well, second time for Verizon, first time for maybe AT&amp;T, that it seems that the day of a meeting, staff gets information and is doing what you can. That's why we had a study session, couple of members had to leave staff to, to go and respond to some stuff. But it, it seems this last-minute stuff by them is something that I, we, we ask for our packets, we ask for our agendas, and I think people, when they put in an application and a process, I understand there's a legal thing going on, but, but somehow I'd like to see that, that change. And I'm, not just these two vendors, I'm talking across the board, that when we get something at three-something, you, you folks do, and then you're trying to give it to us. But this is the second time for Verizon. They did it on the night of the appeal, they brought to show how they could change the aesthetics. It's some 12-page report we got that afternoon. So that's just a, my personal comment on that. I do agree with the max height to, to fit the neighborhood, I think. Michael's comment on the prioritization of arterial street to bring it, so that the neighborhood goes even further down. I know that we talked on, I think it was Irene who asked on page eight, the 300 feet. You know, why does it have to be that? I know staff brought us back when we talked about in-law units. The new thing, the Sacramento pass that placed it upon us, which makes parking even more challenging. And staff had asked for X number of hundred feet. And we said, no, 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 no. We want to lower and make it even smaller, to, I think it was 462, off memory. So, and so I'm, I'm trying to wonder, the 300 feet you're saying, it could be, there's about, where, where do you push the envelope? So.
So the, the problem is, Mr. Mayor, is that we, we don't know, we don't have enough information in order to advise you about where to push that envelope to. And the reason why I say that is because it may very well be that in one neighborhood, all of the poles are available for installation of these facilities. In other words, there's no other facilities on the pole that would prohibit one of the carriers from citing their facility on pole number one instead of pole number two. On the other hand, in another neighborhood, it might be the case that 90% of the poles have facilities on them that make it impossible for a carrier to locate their facility on, on those poles. So the carrier is going to come in and say, well, you know what? You have to give it to me on a pole that's within 300 feet, or 500 feet, or 1,000 feet of another pole, because there are no other poles. So until we start working with the ordinance and the guidelines, we're really not going to know the, the answer to that question. Fortunately, the ordinance has, and the guidelines has an exception procedure in it that allows staff the discretion to be able to, to make those decisions under certain circumstances, if it turns out to be infeasible for one way or another. But the, the problem with suggesting 500 or 1,000 is from, for staff to tell you that, it's really an arbitrary recommendation. And we're, I think we're all feeling like we, we don't want to provide a recommendation that's arbitrary, that we don't know what the impact of it will be.
And I am summarizing some of the council comments. I've heard, push harder where it can be located. I think that took with the arterial street as well. One thing I want to also bring up, because I know we've heard it, safety, and I think Marty had brought up about how we're constrained. But on school property, do we have any jurisdiction at whether a cell tower goes to Bel Air School?
I'll answer that. So a cell tower would go through the separate process. That would go through conditional use permit process, public hearing, appeal to council.
Okay.
It is highly unlikely, again, because it's going to only be in the right-of-way, that a carrier would choose a location in front of a school. But if they did, we'd put them through the same test we would anything else.
And the reason I'm bringing this up is because we keep hearing about the children. And I know when I was at the coffee, somebody brought up about the Verizon generator that was going to be on Bel Air, which, how can we allow that? Well, that, that's not us.
Correct. That's usually a different type of facility.
Correct.
It's the macro facility, and some school districts do enter into leases that go through the school district board, enter into at least, much like it was on a city facility. But we're not talking about.
I understand that. I just want, because I know we keep going back to the school, where we're not talking about that type of tower. But it does come that the city, or there's a perception that the city can say no. And we cannot go on to private grounds of a school district, or a school facility, and say what they can. A tower, for example. Is that correct?
Well, if, okay, if there were a tower proposed on a school district facility, like a lease, that would go through a city process, because that's not a classroom facility that's exempt from our local zoning, like the classroom. So that would go through the use permit process, and have a public hearing that would be publicly noticed. And that, and there's a different test for those.
I understand that. Okay.
We would regulate those.
But we have limited jurisdiction too, on, on, because it's not our property. It is the school districts.
We have the same jurisdiction that we do to private property, because they, they would be providing, building a non-classroom facility that the city can regulate.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. We would have, you could potentially deny that permit, just like you did for macro.
For macro. Macro. I just wanted, I just, I'm bringing it up because it's some, some of the things I heard at the coffee. And I know that the question comes up about dangerous and unwanted, but I think, as even Marty had mentioned, you can't pass a rule or say, we don't want you. You know, that, that's when you do get in trouble. And that was in this community, I can remember when we had assisted living right here on the other side of the park, and neighborhood went up and said, you cannot. The state has said no. There was a, a house for folks who were coming out, I guess halfway house of recovery, and they didn't want it in their neighborhood, and that was over where I used to live, over on Milton. Sorry, there's nothing we can do. The state has forbidden those. So there are, so I think that's where our staff is trying to say, you can't just say, we don't want you. Because, and that is when you can get yourself in, in trouble in that perspective. You have to follow within the rules, the law, and try to figure out the best way that we could use, which we did on 123 Elm, which was the aesthetics, which I think was a correct decision. And it looked ugly. And it didn't fit the neighborhood, bottom line. So that, that's where we're having the trouble. But to share with my colleagues, I do think that the notification seems important. I, you, if I heard you correctly, you mentioned the appeal process was going to be done in public. Is that correct?
Let me clarify that.
Please.
It would be a meeting that is open to the public. It would not be a true public hearing.
But it would, it would be noticed? Would it be noticed? Would it be held at city hall, for example? Would the public be able to attend? Would it be after business hours, so that folks that do work or have other obligations could attend?
Lot of questions there.
It would be a meeting that is open to the public, not a typical public hearing, which the legislative body could do. Would it be at a facility that is accessible to the public? Yes. I'm, I would assume most would be at city hall, some could be elsewhere, but, you know, we would always aim for a facility that's open to the public. Would they always be after hours? I do not know that. Typically, for appeals, you communicate with the parties and try and find an agreeable time where they can come. I don't want to commit to having them all after hours. I just don't know that we would be able to accomplish that in every instance. Will they be noticed? Is the other question. And people that have asked to be notified about that application will receive notice? Would we do a 300, or 500, or 1,000-foot radius notification for the appeal? No. We would do a notice to the people that, based on the initial application notice, have said that they want to be notified about events related to that application.
I think that was it for right now. Any other follow-up?
Thank you. The, these locations need to get a building permit to electrify their power?
Possibly. They would just, or they would just get an encroachment permit. The powers pull typically through the pole carrier, and the city doesn't issue a building permit.
Okay. So they, normally you have to get a green tag from the building department in order to energize a line, but if that's not required?
It's just done through a separate process, through, if it's on a, like an existing wood utility pole, because that's controlled by the JPA.
Okay. But they still need a meter? And normally, BGE won't release a meter unless the building department comes out and tags it.
On private property, yes. Sometimes there's exceptions in the right-of-way.
Okay. I'm just curious.
But if a building permit's required, we would obviously require it. I just.
Right. Because when it's tested.
Often, it's just an encroachment permit.
Right.
And for an existing pole, they may not need a new meter.
Okay. But when it's tested, when, to turn it on and see, somebody's going to go out there and, and check to see that the frequency, the, is, it all works properly? And the city has some, gets a report on that at that time, or how does that work?
Through conditions of approval, we do require that testing, and they furnish the report.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Comments? Okay. So let's be for, I'm sorry, go ahead, city manager.
There were two other things that were mentioned. I should turn on my mic. There were two things that were mentioned that we would like to clarify. One with regard to height, I think it was a question from council member Marty Medina that we did not address. I think you said that you would prefer that it be lower. Just wanted to clarify that the design guidelines, page four, letter N, as in Nancy, pole heights shall be minimized, but in no case shall the maximum height of any facility exceed 50 feet. If you remember, staff. If you'll remember, staff was initially recommending 35 feet. Based on public comment, it was said that, well, maybe in some locations, higher is better. If it's on an arterial, potentially in the transit corridors plan, where the built, where the building may be three or four stories, having 50 feet may be okay. And so we wanted to provide the design guidelines that clearly said, we prefer, they should be as, as low as possible, but a maximum of 50. And that's why you have the guideline written as, as, as it is with the maximum of 50. And, and the other thing that we wanted to clarify was the preference to arterial streets. We think the best place for that to go in the design guidelines is on page eight, after letter H, so a new letter I, and suggested language is arterial streets are more preferable to local streets for the placement of small wireless facilities. And so to not have it in that prioritization that I said before, because that prioritization is actually zoning districts, but to have it called out, like some of the other guidelines are called out, so after H, make a new I, arterial streets are more preferable to local streets for placement of small wireless facilities. So we, when we get to introduction of, of the ordinance and resolution, we can make that wording change.
Staff?
So the actions before the council tonight would be, first of all, to adopt the resolution for the design guidelines. That's a one action, a separate action. And then the second recommended action is to waive first reading and introduce the ordinance as presented and with the recommended changes that we can have someone read into the record.
So the first action, if council wishes, is to adopt the resolution. Is that what you're saying? City attorney?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, that's what I was going to do too, but he did it in reverse. So we have, does council have any action on the resolution in regards to the facility designs?
I move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just to be clear, that will include the mention of arterial streets, as referenced earlier.
With the addition of the arterial street condition.
For the record, the language is arterial streets are more preferable to local streets for the placement of small wireless facilities.
Correct.
Agreed. Roll call vote. Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next action would be to waive the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? 4-0. And the action on the ordinance?
I move that we approve the ordinance.
That would be to introduce the ordinance. It would come back at the, at a subsequent meeting for adoption.
Okay. I move that we introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to the next item, conduct of business. Thank you for sitting through the, the meeting and your conversation.
One moment while we pull up the next presentation.
This, we have two items that are both being done by the city attorney. So with council, we'll go ahead and take them together, because it is just to review and give direction. There is no actual action.
And the official title, these are items 6B and item 6C. Review, report, and provide direction regarding amendments to remaining portions of San Bruno Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel, as part of a comprehensive municipal code update. And item 6C, review, report, and provide direction regarding amendments to San Bruno Municipal Code Title III, Revenue and Finance, as part of a comprehensive municipal code update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. So we have before you tonight discussion and direction of the remainder of Title II of our municipal code, as well as all of Title III. So we're going to take a look, first of all, at what our agenda is for this evening. I'm going to provide you with a little background about what we've done so far and where we are in the process. And then we're going to go into a detailed discussion regarding the remainder of Title II, which is administration and personnel. And then also, next, a detailed discussion regarding Title III, which is revenue and finance. And then we'll look at next steps. So just for background, the city council started this process in October of 2018, when they directed staff to comprehensively evaluate and amend the municipal code. Well, why did they do that? And primarily, it's because most of the sections of our code date back now over 40 years to the 1980s. We've noticed over the course of the last number of years, internal inconsistencies. The law has changed, necessitating that we interpret our code in, that's consistent with, with existing law, not what the law was in 1980. And also to implement best practices for the 21st century, when your code was adopted in the 20th century. So the council authorized us to retain Quality Code Publishing. That's an entity that codifies our municipal code when you adopt ordinances. And they did a thorough review of the code, Title I to chapter, to Title 11. And at that time, we estimated that in addition to their review, it would take somewhere between 24 to 36 months for the full code to be revised. So on the 23rd of October last year, we initiated introduction of Title I, the general provisions, and Title II, Administration and Personnel. And what did, what did we cover in those titles? We covered the city council, we covered the vice mayor rotation, and some other topics that we'll get to in just a little bit. So in November of last year, Quality Code Publishing, ahead of schedule, finished their review of our entire code, titles one through 11. Now, that sounds good, except their review was limited. And so in addition, and on top of that review, now comes the hard part, which is actually figuring out what sections really do need to be amended to meet the city's current needs. And so they did a cursory review for internal consistency. Now we have to do the legal review and drafting. So last November, the city council adopted amendments to Title I and then a portion of Title II, Chapter 2.04. And what did that deal with? Well, Title I dealt with a slightly revised appeal process to make it more streamlined. We made some minor changes to the claims process, and importantly, to developer indemnity, so that we're sure that developers absorb the full costs of city responses to things like Public Records Act requests. What did Title II involve? It was Chapter 2.04, and that was, we codified all of the revised election procedures as a result of moving to even-year elections. And so that conformed with state law. And then we also changed the vice mayor selection process. So for tonight's review, we're going to focus on substantive changes to Title II and Title III. So let's move into those. Oh, and by the way, I'm not going to spare you and not discuss the titles that we don't have any substantive changes to. Those are reflected in your staff report. There's some minor wording changes throughout, as you'll note, gender references, you know, tenses and so on. So we're, we're not going to talk about those specifically. We're going to focus only on the portions that have true substantive changes. And as we go along, please stop me if you have any questions. All right. So let's start with Title II. So 2.04, we already talked about that. We already did that. That's completed. That's done. Chapter 2.06 deals with the redevelopment agency. Well, you'll remember that the state abolished those, so we're recommending that that entire chapter be deleted. Chapter 2.12, the only substantive, it's really a not substantive change there, but it, it addresses the city manager's authority to execute contracts. We know the city manager has that authority. Best practice and case law suggests it should be in the ordinance, so we're putting it in. 2.20, again, clarifies the city clerk is appointed by the city council. So when you went to appoint, appointed city clerk and treasurer position, that's the very next one. So we made that change in 2.20 and 2.24. And importantly, for the city treasurer, those duties were all transferred to the finance director. And then in 2.28, of course, we had to update the duties of the finance director to make sure that the finance director is doing all those things that the treasurer used to be doing, and so that's in there now. And then finally, on this slide, 2.32, elections, that was previously completed, and that dealt with the switch from odd year to even year elections. All right. Next, we have 2.36. That was updated for consistency with state law regarding allowed and prohibited political activities of employees. This is kind of an interesting section. We'll, we'll just pause for a moment. So the, the city had somewhat outdated rules in its municipal code about the sorts of political activities that employees can engage in. And as you read in the staff report, they can engage in some political activities, but, but not very many, and not while on duty, and not while in uniform. So they don't lose all of their First Amendment rights just because they work for the city, but those rights must be exercised and are constrained in a certain fashion. So we have updated 2.36 with all of the most recent allowances and prohibitions that exist in state law, to make sure that everybody is clear about that. And one of the things that we've talked about following up on, especially in view of upcoming elections, is that we would send a memo to all staff indicating that this section is being updated and amended. That way, all employees know what they, what they can and can't do. One of the most important changes that we're, we're making, finally, after quite a while, is in Section 2.44. And I, I think we're all really excited about this. Perhaps most excited are public works director. So 2.44 is your section on purchasing and bid procedures. And you'll remember that the city council, under state law, is required to publicly bid all public works contracts in excess of $5,000. Well, that's almost every public works contract, and you've seen a lot of them on your agenda. And what that does is it requires staff not only to write a staff report, to, to do all of those things, but the, the cost of public bidding is actually quite expensive and requires a lot of staff time. So many years ago, what the state did is they adopted a, a statute that said, if cities and public agencies want to opt into this system, then instead of publicly bidding everything over $5,000, we'll give you an increased limit. And that limit has gone up over the years, and it's now a maximum of $212,000. So under this ordinance, what can cities do? Well, what they have to do is they have to create lists of qualified contractors for all of the projects that they're going to be performing. And then they can do an informal bidding process with those previously qualified contractors. So what that does is it saves a tremendous amount of time and money, and makes the contract bid and award process much more streamlined and less expensive. Importantly, transparency is not reduced or, or, is not, is not reduced. And the reason for that is because the city council still has to approve the project. They still have to approve a design contract. Those aren't covered under the public bidding procedures. And they still see the project to close out, to determine what the final cost of the project was and, and what happened. But for those projects that are under about $212,000, the city can adopt internal procedures to bid those informally with pre-selected and pre-qualified contractors. And in addition to that, the staff has and will be implementing detailed cost accounting measures to make sure that the, the costs of all those contracts are properly tracked. So the important thing about this is that the city manager's contract authority, of course, is $75,000. So you'll be seeing contracts that are between 75 and 212,000 for approval, but the good news is that they won't have to be always publicly bid. They can be informally bid, based on a public RFQ process, request for qualifications, that city staff is going to initiate. Does anyone have questions about that?
We have a question. Irene?
I do. It's not something, oh, thank you. It's not something you've stated yet, but it's in the staff report. So do you have more on that section? Or do you want me to just tell you?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So it's the very last paragraph, which I did not understand. It says, finally, there is a new section addressing contracts for concessions, allowing the city manager or council, depending on contract value, to war, this is the part I did not understand, to war to the highest ranked proposer, taking into consideration the economic return to the city and other factors. I did not understand what that meant.
If, if you wouldn't mind telling me where that is in the staff report?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's page five of seven, and it's the last paragraph under, shoot, a sec, under this section.
Right. I see.
2.44.
Thank you. So that does not address the public bidding issue. That addresses a separate authority for the city manager to award non-public works construction contract concessions. So a concession would be, for example, that whether the city would like to have a, a private vendor barbecue, hot dogs and hamburgers at the snack shack, for example. So those things are purchases that the city manager can make up to his or her authority. And the, previously, there was no explicit authorization for the city manager to enter into those types of agreements, because it's not a public works project, it's not a professional services, it's not any of the things we usually do. It's sort of an outlier.
Okay. Okay. I got it. Thank you.
All right. So to close on the purchase and bid procedures, there are a lot of major changes to that chapter. There are about 1,000 public agencies in California that already use the higher limits of the Uniform Public Cost Accounting Code. So we, we don't think there's going to be any particular difficulty in adopting those procedures. But as you can see from the staff report, there's also a resolution that we have to adopt separately to do that. And we're not asking you to do that tonight. It'll all come back to you for introduction of the ordinance and adoption of that resolution.
Just on that, that would make.
City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the authority of the mayor. The uniform practice will actually make some of our building maintenance practices more efficient, in that, if you remember, during the rainy season, we had a number of roofs that need to be repaired. A number of them were over $5,000, even though they were within the city manager's signature authority. We had to do individual bids for those. And so if, if we have staffing and the ability to have a maintenance staff that can manage the pre-qualification process, we can pre-qualify vendors to do roof replacements and things like that, to provide more expeditious repairs. And I'm alluding to the parks and maintenance manager position that's in the proposed budget that would do that pre-qualification process.
I didn't catch that.
I know. But, but, but again, it's, it's just another example of how this, combined with other things, can actually help speed up our practice in maintaining our facilities.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. And just quickly to follow up on that, in that particular situation, we were trying to figure out, how can we get around the, the public bidding? Is it an emergency? Can the city manager declare an emergency? The city council has to ratify it. Is the emergency going to be over by the time the repairs are done? It's just sort of a ridiculous thing to have such a, frankly, to have such a, a low limit. So I think this is, this is going to be something that will dramatically improve the efficiency of the city and its ability to deliver projects much, much more quickly. All right. So moving to the next section of Title, Chapter II, which, in which there have been some major changes. And the last one in which there have been is 2.48, which is all of the emergency preparedness chapter. And this is interesting, because since our code was adopted, the state has come in and said that every city's emergency preparedness section and designation of what they call a disaster council, that ordinance has to be approved by the state. So in order to ensure uniformity among cities that might be involved in disasters, and there certainly have been a lot of them recently, the state wants to ensure that cities are all basically doing about the same thing. So what we've done is modify the ordinance to comply with the state model ordinance. What does the state model ordinance say? It designates a disaster council, and that's really the city's liaison to the state in the event of a disaster or emergency. And what the state says is, specifies the people who should be on that disaster council. And what their model ordinance recommends is the mayor, representative of OES, Office of Emergency Services, the city manager, and the police and fire chiefs for formal liaison with the state and FEMA during the emergency. And so that's what our ordinance recommends, because we know we're going to need to send it to the state. The ordinance also retains all of the current functions and structure of the emergency preparedness committee. So when our ordinance was previously drafted- So, when our ordinance was previously drafted, it designated the emergency preparedness committee as the disaster council. And so, now, that's really not what the state is looking for. The state is looking for different individuals to be on this formal disaster council. And if the city wants to have an emergency preparedness committee, which we assume they do, and we assumed they did when I drafted the amendments, that emergency preparedness committee can remain with all of the functions and duties that it currently has, and certainly, as it was essential and important during the emergencies and disasters that the city has previously had. So, that concludes my review of Title II. Does anyone have any other questions about that?
How quick does the bidding procedures begin? Do you have to get them all prequalified? And then, what's the timeframe for that?
Yeah, you know, that's a good question. I haven't actually spoken with staff about the timing aspect of it. We know there's going to be a ramp-up period in getting those prequalified contractors in. We also know that staff is aware of who the contractors are, and, you know, we think can do that relatively efficiently. And hopefully, while the introduction and adoption and effective date of the ordinance are done, we can get that moving simultaneously. But we'll have to check with staff on that and the city manager.
Yeah. Through the mayor.
City manager.
Yeah. Don't have a timetable, but it will take some time. What we would like to do is to look at all of the routine work that we perform and have a more annual prequalification process. That takes time and staff, so no hard timeframe on when we can do it.
Irene.
I was just double checking, oh, I'm sorry. I was just double checking to see if it was actually in the ordinance, but I don't see it. I was looking at 2.5 when it talks about the Culture and Arts Commission, or Arts and Culture Commission. And I was looking for the part that spells out how the commission is funded, but that's not in the ordinance, is it? Is that in a resolution? Or at least, I don't see it.
Well, we didn't make any changes to the ordinance, except the ones that you have there. And we know how it is funded. I don't remember, one way or another, if it is in the ordinance or not. Let me take a look.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see it. And the reason I brought it--
It may be in the resolution.
Over the years, we've talked about looking at the resolution, or at the ordinance, but I guess the resolution, and looking at how we assess large developments, because I don't think it spells it out.
Oops, pay attention.
Are you finding it?
Somebody's telling me it's in Section 3, so--
Section, oh.
Because the Section 2 kind of specifies more the emergency preparedness.
And I would guess that fee would be set by resolution, and I think it's reported as an AB 1600 fee as well, so, I don't recall.
Okay. I don't recall either, but I remember that we needed to look at it. So, I'm just putting it as a placeholder to look at before we get too many of these developments without that being looked at.
We can, through the mayor--
Yeah, please.
We can look into adding that to the master fee schedule review that is ongoing. It should fall in that practice, so we'll take a look at it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on Section 2? Let's go to Section 3.
All right. So, an even more riveting section is revenue and finance. And I want to thank our finance director, Keith DiMartini, for his review of this section. We also had substantial input from our outside counsel. So, let's just take a look and see what we did for Title III quickly. So, the first thing to remember is the city council can't make any changes to this ordinance, to this chapter, without a vote of the people if that change would result in anyone paying a higher tax than they're paying right now. So, that's the limitation that we have in making changes to this particular ordinance. So, we did a couple of things just to modernize it. The first one is we revised the definition of family. That's been the subject of litigation for over 40 years, as family units have changed over time, and no longer necessarily are related people living together in a household. So, that has been updated to comply with current case law. In 3.04.190, we revised the definition of peddler, which you wouldn't think needed to be revised, but it does, because the state, you may have read in the newspaper, recently came out with a statute that says we have to allow street vendors to sell food under certain circumstances. So, we're going to make that change in Title IV when that comes to you next time. But anticipating that, we wanted to make sure we change the definition in Title III. And then, we also have an exemption for transportation network companies for business licenses. Those are the Uber and Lyft drivers who drive through hundreds of cities or dozens of cities a day. And there's a CPUC exemption that says they don't have to get a business license in every city that they drive through, because otherwise, it would be onerous, and they wouldn't be able to drive anywhere. So, that is consistent with state law now.
Please, Marty. Yes. Mike. Yes. So, they're not required, but if they're based in San Bruno, they're required to get, if their home is in San Bruno, and the car, well, it doesn't have to be registered, but if--
I don't believe so.
They can, they're on their own, really, really.
Right.
All right.
And remember, business license is not a regulatory mechanism. It's a tax. And so, what we're doing here is taxing people, not regulating their conduct. All right. So, on the next slide, we made the final major change to this, which is we added a definition of an inclusion of something called a rental agent, which clarifies, merely clarifies, that individuals who rent their property through a rental agent, say Airbnb or VRBO, are obligated to pay the transient occupancy tax. Well, why did we do that? And the reason is because it's a precursor to the city's regulatory ordinance that it is working on and intends to bring forward to you at some point in the, hopefully, near future, to require registration for transient occupancy tax by all of the individuals that operate those businesses in their home, and also for land use compliance purposes. So, you'll remember that the city council already provided staff with some direction previously about what that regulatory ordinance should include. So, staff is working on that. But that ordinance is also going to include a requirement that the individual get a business license through this process and pay the fee, pay the tax to the city. And that ordinance will be consistent, even if the city decides to adopt something like a voluntary collection agreement with one of the internet platforms. So, what the ordinance makes clear is that somebody has to pay the tax. It's either the internet platform, or it's the rental agent, or it's the owner of the property, or the people that are operating the business. So, somebody is going to have to pay that tax. So, that's what we did, so as to not make anybody else responsible for a tax that they're not already obligated to pay. So, the next steps is, to the extent you haven't done so already, to provide me with any additional direction on Title II and III. We're going to plan the introduction and adoption of these to be scheduled shortly, depending on what your comments are. And then, we're planning to bring back the next two sections, IV and V, to be scheduled for review in 2019, and then we'll be virtually half-done by the time that occurs. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions from council or comments on Section 3 and/or overall? Marty?
I'm looking, City Attorney, page three of six, Section 3.08, 100, mid-paragraph, sorry, wrong page. Yeah, it's there. It's on the, it says, "The law provides a TNC driver is only required to obtain a single business license in the jurisdiction in which the driver is domiciled."
I'm sorry. Tell me again what page you're on. 3.08, point--
That's Chapter 3.08. It's the second paragraph towards the end, or kind of in the middle.
Are you looking at the staff report or the ordinance?
Staff report.
Ah, sorry.
I'm sorry. Staff report, yes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
All right. You're correct. I was mistaken. Thank you.
Michael? More for the attorney? Irene? The city attorney, I know there hasn't been a lot of questions, but are you, do you have what you need to go ahead and bring back two and three?
I believe so. Before we close, I just want to look at one other thing. Having to do with the art in public places. Okay. So, I'm sorry to take so much time, but I wanted to make sure we got Councilmember O'Connell's question answered. So, Section 3.40.050 of the ordinance includes the percentage for, of the fee, of the building permit fee, 5% or 7%, depending on the kind of structure?
And then, I believe because of the large developments, those fees can get really, really big. And I don't think we've ever imposed the whole fee on them. I know we haven't had a lot of big developments, but I recall when we were doing the crossing that instead of giving us 5% of all those building fees that they, the building permit fees that they had to pay, they did public art, but went, so they did public art themselves. So, I'm just remembering this from, I don't know, what is this, 15 years ago? So, since then, we kept talking about looking at how we administered that part, and we never did it, because we haven't had big developments, really. So, I just want to make sure we look at that and make sure we're being equitable, or we have a mechanism for the big developments that are coming in to either produce their own public art, or to make the fee they pay for the public art somehow not in the millions of dollars. Does that make sense?
So, the, well, I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Okay.
The fee is a percentage of the building permit fee, so the developer isn't paying any more. It's an in-loo fee that's a percentage of what's paid for the building permit, and that percentage then goes to the fund--
Yes.
--so that the city can spend it on whatever art it desires, as opposed to having to select art that the developer desires.
Yes. No, I understand that. But at one time, and like I said, this is from memory, at one time, when we were doing the development agreements with the crossing, they objected to spending or paying, I think at the time, it was, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, say. And so, instead of them paying that into the Art and Culture Commission fund, they did some artwork. So, I don't remember how that happened, but I see the city manager has an answer. Through the chair.
Go to you, yes.
Through the chair. So, it is our expectation that all new development, regardless of size, would pay the applicable fees.
Okay.
I believe what you are articulating is that there was a development that asked for an exemption to use some of that money to provide onsite public art.
Yes.
My experience in other localities, that does happen, sometimes through an exemption, other times as written in the ordinance that allows onsite public art. I think we can take a look at our public art fee and take a look at what is more commonplace in the area, and see, do we need to add a formal ability to do onsite public art, or if we would like to keep it as is. And if a development wishes to ask for an exemption, we can bring that exemption to the council with that development approvals.
Okay. Okay.
Marty?
So, I'm looking at Section 3.40.050. And I think we're covered there, where it says, "In the absence of a development agreement or other similar agreement providing for public art or art fund fee, the program allocation shall be as follows, the five or the seven." So, I think we're covered there. And that's maybe--
In absence, so.
Right?
Yeah, I think that's right.
And that's how we would codify the exemptionist through a DA.
Okay. I just didn't want us to lose out.
Any other questions or comments? City Attorney, do you have what you need?
I do. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. We're going to move on to comments from council members. Michael? I am surprised. I just wanted to say real quick that tended to things, one was, Marty was here as well, was the San Bruno Community Foundation scholarships by the young people that received those awards and some of the stories. And some of the individuals that came back were just impressive. And so, it's good to see that some folks are still continuing forward in their education, even when one person told their personal plight on how they had a setback in their personal life, but still continuing forward with the education that they've gotten through this foundation from the PG&E settlement. And then, finally, which Michael was there, and it wasn't as hot as it's been the last couple days, but at the cappuccino graduation, once again, it was impressive to see the graduating class, and the new principal, his first opportunity to have his first class. What was interesting is at one point, he started to ask the young people as far as, "Please stand if you speak two languages." Overwhelmingly, it was impressive. "Please stand up if you're the first one in your family to go to college. Please stand up if you're going to serve the military. Please stand up." And it was impressive to see behind me the young people that really, it gives me hope for the future. It tells me that I should have done better in high school, and I'm not as smart as them. But I'm very, I was very impressed with the educators and the service that they did through their graduation and the class. And I think you saw the same thing. And it was very well worth it. So, anyway, with that, we, as the council, are going to need to go into a closed session. And this is conference with labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6, Agency Designated Representative City Manager and Assistant City Manager Employee Organizations, San Bruno Management Employee Association. With that, we will adjourn to the next regular scheduled meeting of June 25th, right here at the San Bruno Senior Center, 7:00. Meeting adjourned.